...in order to stand for the pleasure of the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invitation, Mr. Nathan Landman from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our dear gracious Father in heaven, we come to thee this evening in humble prayer and thanksgiving. We wish to convey our gratitude for all that thou hast blessed us with. We pray for thy Spirit to be here with us tonight to guide us through the discussions this evening. We ask with lowly hearts for a blessing upon this great nation, upon this beautiful state of Arizona, and upon our town of Fountain Hills. Father, we are forever grateful for thy love and watchful eye over us. We pray that we may always strive to do what's right and to overcome the challenges in our life that may see us falter or fail. Please bless our leaders here tonight and in all they do for us here in our town of Fountain Hills. We love thee, Father, and do pray this humbly, in the sacred name of Jesus Christ, our Savior and Redeemer. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Nathan. All right, before we get started with our presentations, I just have an announcement to make, that Agenda Item Number Two has been removed at the staff's request. That was the Strategic Direction, and that was due to a scheduling conflict and the inability of the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission Chair to attend the meeting this evening. And this Agenda Item will be rescheduled for a future meeting. And now we will go to our scheduled public appearances. The first is League of Arizona...
There.
Excuse me?
Roll call.
Oh, I didn't do a roll call. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Vice Mayor McFerrin?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brown?
Sorry about that. Okay, presentation by League of Arizona Cities and Towns Executive Director Ken Strobeck related to council manager government in Arizona open meeting law. I have no answer to that question.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me pull this presentation up. Make sure I got it right here. There we go. Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. For the record, I am Ken Strobeck, the Executive Director of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. I was asked to come and speak with you tonight regarding two topics, the council manager form of government and Arizona's open meetings law. And what I'm talking about tonight is contained within these two publications that I had put out at each of your tables, Council Manager Government in Arizona and You as a public official. These are two publications from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. And they're also available on our website, azleague.org, so anyone can download them if they want. I'll be, I'll just go over this topic in a fairly high level. If you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt, but otherwise I'm not going to get into extreme detail. Just kind of keep this at a fairly high level, if that's okay with you all. All right, let's talk first about the council manager form of government. Uh, this form of government that applies primarily to local government, cities and counties across the country, was the result of basically the reform movement of the early 20th century. And one of the principles that underlies the council manager form is a separation of powers from the council that has the policymaking authority and the manager who administers and implements the policy that's adopted by the council. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes. Uh, what this form also does is provide basically a check and balance so that there's no centralized power that's unchecked in either the council or in the manager. And the goal, when it was first developed back in 1908 in Virginia, was to professionalize municipal management to move away from what was prominent at the time in America in terms of government corruption, favoritism, cronyism, and nepotism, and really controlled by powerful corporations and so forth that really had their hand on the instruments of power in government. And this was one of the many efforts of this reform movement to try to move away from that and to put power back in the hands of the people. Now, there's an analogy to the structure of corporations. If you think about the corporate structure of a board of directors and a chairman of the board, that is roughly analogous to the council and to the mayor, who's the presiding officer. And then that group hires a CEO or chief executive officer to basically carry out their policies and administer a corporation on a day-to-day basis. And that's very similar to the way that the council manager form of government operates and the differences in authority that the council has and that the manager has. Interestingly enough, the Arizona Constitution was the last one of the lower forty-eights to be drafted and was significantly after the other constitutions of, you know, the colonies back east and so forth, more than a hundred years after that. So in 1912, our constitution contained a lot of these principles of the reform movement. If you think about it, initiative, referendum, and recall were all features that grew out of the same movement as the council manager form of government. Again, efforts to try to put power back in the hands of the people. Uh, two other developments, direct election of US senators and the vote for women were part of the other movements that came out of this same time. So, under the council manager form of government, the council receives public input, is the face of the local government to the community. You set all the policy for the town, you approve the budget, you establish the plans and the goals, and you hire a professional manager based exclusively on someone's professional qualifications, not on who they know and who contributed the most to someone's campaign or who's somebody's brother-in-law. Uh, the manager is hired based on professional qualifications and that, I believe, is in your town code. Uh, the council retains all the authority, all the power and authority of the town resides with the town council. You hire the administrator or the manager to carry out your policy directives. Now, one of the features of council manager is that you as council members are prohibited from giving specific direction to members of the council, or members of the city staff. And that's basically so that the staff doesn't have seven different people coming in and saying, "Drop this project and go pave my street," or whatever, so that they have different kinds of directives. All the communications for getting work done goes through the manager and your role in terms of approaching the staff is to only approach staff for purposes of inquiry, for getting information. Otherwise, you need to go through the manager. Now, the manager, on the other hand, serves entirely at the pleasure of the council. At any time, any four votes can make a change in the manager. And managers who are in that profession understand that and that's just part of the territory that goes with the job. The manager is charged with implementing the policies approved by the council with providing policy alternatives to you and basically saying, "Here are your choices and here are the impacts of your choices," but not making policy himself. Uh, the manager also hires staff, depending on what your code says, which particular individuals report. Most of them in most cities and towns report directly to the manager. Uh, and he again hires staff based on professional qualifications. Same thing with doing contracts or those kinds of things. It's not on the basis of who knows whom or who's favorite of somebody on the council. It's objective criteria and standards. The manager enforces all ordinances passed by the council, manages the day-to-day operations, and probably most importantly of all these things, makes sure that the council is informed about what's going on and keeps you so that you're not surprised or read something in the newspaper one morning. Now, the council manager results, it's the principal form of government now all across the United States for local government, for municipalities and for counties. Uh, there's an organization, the ICMA International City Managers Association, that most professional managers belong to that has a very strict code of ethics. Talks about what they can and can't do and especially stresses that they don't get involved with political campaigns and they don't use their position for political purposes. So, non-political decision-making is one of the key features. Uh, provides also consistency and predictability for employees so that there's not just a change in entire direction depending on the makeup of the council. Also provides some insulation for you as elected officials, that the manager implements policies, but the staff does not have a direct again, reporting responsibility back to you. And overall, it really does provide for a more efficient form of government. Um, there are some other forms of municipal government. These are the ones that exist in other parts of the country. There's the strong mayor form in which the mayor essentially serves as the chief officer of the town. In our system, council manager, the mayor is the presiding officer, but the mayor's vote doesn't count any more than any other member's vote. In the strong mayor system, the mayor often has a veto over anything that the council passes and pretty much can run the show. In the weak mayor system, there is no administrator at all. The council basically functions as both the policymaking and the implementation body. And this is primarily a feature of very, very small communities in states that have, you know, hundreds and hundreds of small towns and really don't have the resources for professional management. The commissioned form of government, uh, basically has each member of the council heading bureaus or administrations and so those changes as the political winds change. A town meeting or town hall form of government is prominent in some states back in the Northeast where basically every member of the community is a voting member of the council. They'll hold an annual meeting and have a lot of policy questions and everyone gets a vote. Um, boroughs and villages and selectmen or other titles for various municipalities, none of these forms exist in Arizona. Uh, the statutes provide for council manager and all of our cities and towns either operate with a council manager form or something that's similar to the council manager form. Some of them, some of the smaller ones don't have somebody with that official title, but the clerk doubles as the administrator or manager. So, that's all I have on the council manager form. There's a lot more in that publication. Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Leader. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Ken, for coming. And it's probably in your handout here, but is there anything there about, um, if you don't have a PIO or, you know, an official public information officer? Some of the things that we talk about is, you know, who talks to the press or that kind of thing. Are there rules for that there or is that something that the city just kind of make up for themselves or makes up for themselves?
That generally goes on a city-by-city basis. There's no hard and fast rule for that. Typically, the manager speaks to the media as the primary media contact for the town itself. But again, the mayor as the chief officer of the town, the figurehead of the town, sometimes also is somebody who will speak on policy matters. And that's something that should probably be worked out between the manager and the mayor on who's going to speak on what. But for typical day-to-day communications about what the town is doing in most communities, the manager is the spokesman.
Anyone else?
All right. Well, I'll move on into, this is a fun topic, the open meetings law. Uh, this is right out of the Arizona revised statutes and it really states the purpose and the goal behind the open meetings law. And I'll read this for you. Says, "It is the public policy of the state that meetings of public bodies be conducted openly and that notices and agendas for those meetings contain such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided." That really is the formal policy. And there have been some other court cases and interpretations. And the general principle that has come down is that it's the business of the public that you are engaged in conducting and any business that involves the public must be done in full view and full scrutiny of the public. And that's really the purpose behind the open meetings law. What is a public body? Well, a public body is any board or commission of any political subdivision, all multi-member governing bodies of departments, agencies, institutions, et cetera. So basically, anything that is an official body of either the state or any political subdivision of the state is considered to be a public body and therefore the open meeting law applies to that body. That also applies to advisory committees. So any board, commission, or advisory committee that is officially created by the council would fall into this category, being officially established upon motion or order of the public body and whose members have been appointed for the specific purpose of making a recommendation concerning decisions to the elected officials. So, you don't have to be an elected official to have this law apply to you, but if there are people who are members of boards and commissions or advisory committees that you have appointed, then they are subject to the open meetings law. The exceptions, staff meetings, staff-appointed committees that advise other staff not making recommendations directly to the council or individual department heads are not considered to be meeting in open meetings law, subject to the open meetings law. So what is a meeting? It's a gathering in person or through technological devices, and there are many, many more technological devices than there used to be, of which a quorum of members of the public body discuss, propose, or take legal action, including any deliberations by a quorum with respect to such action. And one of the shorthand ways of describing that is, anytime you're deliberating towards a decision, if you're doing that with any quorum of this body or any of the other bodies that I mentioned, that needs to be done in public, needs to be done where the public can have access and see what you're doing. If you gather through the purposes of a telephone conference call or multiple emails or any other technological means and a quorum of you are talking about what your positions are or moving towards a decision, that would be a violation of the open meetings law and that is prohibited. That's, attending by phone for a meeting like this is permitted under the statute, but the public again must be able to hear the person on the phone. Uh, the person on the phone must be able to hear everything going on in the meeting and participation on the telephone must be noted on the agenda ahead of time. Now, you can't splinter the quorum. That means you can't send an email to two members of the council and have those two members of the council forward that email on to somebody else and say, "Look and see what these two other members are doing and I think this is a great idea, let's make sure we do that." So even if you say, "Hey, I only sent it to two members," that moving on to another two members does constitute an illegal quorum. So whether it's email, telephones, text message, polling, or using the staff, even if one of you sends an email to a staff member of the town and says, "You know, I think this is a great idea, I want to make sure we pass, you know, item number three on the agenda next week." Would you send this to all the rest of the members of the council and find out where they are on it? That is an illegal polling, illegal use of the staff for doing that. Now, in today's world, there are lots of places where a quorum of you may be present and the Attorney General has taken a very strict view of wherever there is a quorum present and has said that if you're going to be at a place, even if it's a social event or a sporting event or some other activity where a quorum may be present, it's advisable to post a courtesy agenda just letting the public know that there may be a quorum of the council attending such and such events, but no public business will be conducted. That way, if somebody looks around and says, "Well, I saw four members of the council at the, you know, at the baseball game the other day," that's okay because it was posted and no business was conducted. So you just have to, as public officials, you are held to a different standard. And so you just need to be aware of that, be extra conscious of that and say, you know, "This is what you ran for" and, you know, other members of the public or other members of the community are not held to the same standard, but you folks are. So you just need to be aware of that. Email communications, I talked about this a little bit, but the same open meeting law restrictions apply. You can't have an email that proposes to take legal action or even expresses what your opinion is on something. Now, there's a kind of a fine line here. If there's an article in the paper that you think is interesting and you want other people to see it, you can send that to other members of the council and say, "Here's an article I want you to see," and just send it. But if you say, "Here's an article that I think is great and I really support this position," that would be a violation of the open meetings law. So, in general, because it's such a fine line, I'd advise that you probably are not, should not take that position of even sending something and saying, "Here's something that I'm interested in," because even that is sort of telegraphing what your opinion is about something. Again, can't propose legal action in an email. You can't say, "I want to make sure everybody is at the next meeting because I want to pass whatever this proposal is." And using email is not a way to circumvent the open meeting law. Even if you say, "Well, I'm using my personal home email account," if it's public business that you're discussing, that is considered public record. And even if it's going to your home email, that's not insulation from the open meetings law. Now, the Attorney General, a while back, had issued an opinion about even writing op-eds and opinion pieces in the newspaper. And at one time, it was his opinion that that would even be a violation because other members of the council could read your opinion piece in the paper and be influenced and say, "Well, that was an illegal violation." They have since backed off from that position. So writing an op-ed that appears in print in the newspaper is not considered a violation of the open meetings law anymore, fortunately. Um, staff again may send emails to council members and passive receipts of that is okay. A lot of communities actually have a little notation on their email that says, "Do not forward this on to a quorum of the council." But again, staff may not send out opinion or substantive communications about council business or other business that's going to appear before the council and send that to a quorum. Now, taking action, all legal action of public bodies shall occur during a public meeting. So that's when you take a vote on any issue that's been agendized for a possible action. Uh, that has to occur in full view of the public. A legal action is a collective decision, commitment or promise made by a public body pursuant to the Constitution or the public body's charter, bylaws, or specified scope of appointment and the laws of the state. So whenever you vote on something, you're taking legal action that must be done in full view of the public. Before the legal meeting can occur, it has to be noticed. Notice sent to members, an agenda has to be published, and it must be accessible to the public. Uh, this, the law was changed a couple of years ago requiring the conspicuous posting on your city or town website or the website of an association of cities and towns. For those that don't have a website of their own, we have a few of those communities left in the state. You have to post where the actual physical posting of meeting notices will occur. You have to post meeting notices of the town on your website or an association website. And by the way, we have links to all cities and towns on our website so anyone can go to just one location and get all the meetings that are happening at any city or town in the state and provide additional notice of meetings as is reasonable and practicable. There is an emergency exception, it requires an actual emergency. And we like to say that this should at least involve ambulances or some sirens of some sort. Uh, you can't just say, "It's raining outside, therefore it's an emergency." It has to really be an actual emergency. Uh, and you can meet in a shorter period of time, but you must post public notice and agenda of the action that you've taken within 24 hours under that emergency situation and those are extraordinarily rare. Agendas must be able to have the public determine whether there's something that's going to be of interest enough for them to want to attend. So you can't just say, "New business, old business, town business." It has to be something that is at least descriptive enough that I would get out of my recliner and bother to come down and attend the council meeting. Uh, and so it has to be descriptive enough to give somebody an idea of what's going to be discussed. At the meeting, you determine a quorum, you've done that tonight. Record the members that are present or absent. You operate under the parliamentary rules of procedure that you have adopted. Doesn't have to be Robert's Rules, it can be whatever parliamentary rules that are appropriate for your particular business. Uh, note that any agenda order or changes, as the mayor did tonight, that one item will not be considered. And the public's right, this is what the public has the right to do. All persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberations and proceedings of all public bodies. Now, that does not say that the public has the right to speak on every matter. In fact, they don't. The council is the policymaking body, you are the elected officials, and you are here to make policy on behalf of the town. And the authority that you have comes from your election and the public has the right to see, attend, and listen to everything that you are doing. But again, they don't have an absolute right to speak. Now, you have a call to the public and most cities do and often they will allow comment on even specific agenda items. But the important thing to remember is that this is a meeting that's open to the public. It's not a public meeting unless there's a specific agenda item that says there's a public hearing. We always recommend avoiding personal attacks. That's a good behavior guideline. And as you no doubt read about some communities that are having a bit of turmoil, we always say that, you know, the behavior that you get on behalf of the audience is the behavior that you model. So as long as you're conducting business in a civil manner, even if you have disagreements, but it's not personal, it's not individual attacks, then people see that business is being done in an orderly and decent manner. At the meeting, you have sign-in sheets, but that again is optional. Uh, anyone addressing you should identify themselves, include the name and their points in the minutes. After-hours meetings, if you're having a meeting after a regularly scheduled time, do not lock the entrance doors, again, accessibility is required. And in the minutes, you record the motions and the maker of the motions. In terms of minutes, cities and towns with a population of 2,500 or more shall post legal actions taken on your website within three working days. And then you have to post the minutes, once they have been approved, within two working days following approval. And those minutes have to remain on your website for one year. Same is true of subcommittees or advisory committees. You shall have written minutes and record all those meetings, including executive sessions. And within 10 working days of a meeting, you must post, again, any legal action or post a recording of the public meeting of an advisory group. There are seven reasons that you can go into executive session. Those are itemized in the publication, You as a Public Official. You can only go into executive sessions for those specific reasons. And then any action that you take, again, has to be done in open session. Uh, if you hold a meeting in violation of the open meetings law, it's possible that all the legal action that has occurred at that meeting is declared null and void. Uh, you can also be investigated by Omlot. That's not something made with eggs. That's the open meeting law enforcement team from the Attorney General's office. They handle all the inquiries. And once people have written, made a signed written complaint, Omlot investigates alleged violations of the open meetings law. And these are the various actions that the AG may take, all the way from issuing an investigation to examining documents, examining recordings, et cetera, to determine if there has been a violation. Uh, failure to comply can result in contempt of court and injunctive order against further conduct. And consequences of the violation are either serious. Any person affected by the alleged violation may file in Superior Court. So any person who is affected by a violation, that would mean any citizen can bring that to complaint. Each violation, if you're found to have violated the law, can result in a civil penalty of up to $500 for each count and removal from office. And generally, your insurance, the insurance pool does not cover individual assessments for open meeting law violations. So that comes out of your own pocket. So I advise you to be very careful about that. That's all I have in terms of the open meeting law. Uh, again, the principle is you conduct the public's business in view of the public so that they can see what your thought process is, what your deliberations are, and what your ultimate decision is.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Very often, we have some regular events here like living cuttings for new businesses and we have breakfast for chamber and those are always posted. But there's always a circumstance where everybody's going to decide that, you know, Friday night, we're going to go to the Fountain football game and everybody shows up. Now, obviously, you can't know every single event that everybody's going to go to. So what would you say to situations like that?
In those kind of situations where you have an accidental quorum that just happens to show up, I would just say, make sure that no quorum actually sits together or stays together in the same park, you know, if you're going to a sporting event, half of you sit on one side and half sit on the other. Just some way to split up so that it doesn't look like. Again, it's the appearance that you're worried about. And the general rule is, you want to see this on the front page of the paper. You know, here's the whole council sitting together in violation of the law. You don't want to see that. So you can split up and, you know, I've been to some communities where there's only one restaurant in town and they say, "York, what are we going to do?" Everybody after the meeting, everybody goes to the same place, but they all split up and go sit in different booths to tables, so.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a counsel to give you?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ken, again. You know, we assume that we know all this stuff, but I think it's just really great for staff and for the public and for us to hear all this, either for the first time or again. Um, I have a question about, you said that if somebody did like, um, an opinion piece in the paper and I remember when this was all being discussed, and that's not a violation of the open meeting law. But is it, um, perceived as a violation or any sort of prohibition or ethics when you have an opinion on something? We've had, you know, a few things in the past, whether it was an email or endorsements of candidates, um... letters that we get, we, I even get like letters from other councils, people in other cities who take pretty strong stands one way or the other, and they have their title in there. Is there any sort of prohibition or ethics violation for a council person? Even if they're not speaking for everybody, they are who they are, that they should not be allowed to express their opinion?
No, Councilwoman, you do not lose your rights as a citizen when you become elected to the council. But you do have some rules about what you can and can't do in terms of using public resources for those opinions. So, you are free as an elected official to endorse a candidate or a particular ballot proposition or some other issue. And you're free to say that I am a councilwoman on the Fountain Hill Town Council. But you're not allowed to use town resources, town email, town equipment, town property, et cetera, in order to do that. That has to be something that you do completely on your own, on your own dime.
Thank you. That's a good question. Anyone else?
Madam?
Councilwoman Hen?
No, 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 after you.
Can they have a commission, and on that commission, they form subcommittees? As subcommittees, subject to the open meeting law?
If it's a subcommittee that contains the same members of the appointed committee, I would say, yes, they are appointed, they are subject to the meeting law if they're... If they're, if it's like a nine-member commission and four of them say, "We're going to meet and deliberate on something that's business-related to the reason for which they are appointed," I think that would cover that.
What if they use citizens other than those that were on the commission?
I don't know, you're getting into kind of a gray area. I would say that probably not if they are only advising the appointed group, and then the appointed group has to make a final decision that has been advisory to the council. And it does not involve exclusively members of the appointed group. I would say that probably would not, but I defer to your town attorney for a final ruling on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Hen, so we've taken the position that if that subcommittee officially appoints people, just like if the council officially appoints people, that the membership of the sub-subcommittee is not necessarily the determinative factor. It's whether or not that group has officially selected these folks to go do part of their jobs for them to provide information or feedback. I know that on an informal level, many of our commissions and committees do that, where they'll send a couple of members out, go out and find out information. And typically, it's cured, if we can use that term, by the fact that they're bringing information back to a posted meeting of the whole group and they all talk about it, as long as their deliberations are in that meeting. But officially, our position is that the sub-subcommittee is still subject to the open meeting law, although I know that functionally, that doesn't always happen.
Councilwoman Hen?
Director Schorbach, thank you for coming, I appreciate this. For I am newly elected, so a lot of this comes in handy. But if you could, not just for myself, but maybe for our people here, our viewers, could you elaborate on what the League of Arizona Cities and Towns actually does? Who are members and how you operate in this whole big thing we call government?
Sure, happy to, Councilman, thank you. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns, as you can see from our logo here, was created 75 years ago by the cities and town officials, it was created by a group of mayors. And our primary function is to work with the state legislature and the governor on policy matters that come before that body, because they have the ability to pass laws that affect us. And so, we represent the interests of cities and towns on a generic basis, things that impact all cities and towns, not specifically individual ones. We also develop model ordinances, as your attorney knows, with things such as the impact fees and many other issues that we work on. We answer inquiry questions, we will provide information to any city and town. Our members are the cities and towns of Arizona. And we're governed by a 25-member executive committee made up of mayors and council members. So, we serve the cities and towns as sort of a cooperative agency and association that leverages your abilities, so you don't have to recreate all those activities in each one of the communities across the state.
Okay. Councilwoman Dickie?
I agree, just one of those lines, you know, they have the annual conference, which is just, they educate you all year long, but that is particularly informative and a great resource for us. And one of the sections I went through this time had actually to do with what you're talking about tonight, which is our, the council and how we interact with the managers and the staff. And they said that staff, of course, and council needs to be cognizant that staff doesn't take direction from us. And I know that we probably don't always follow that as well as we could. And so, we'll work hard on that. But one thing I thought was interesting is that they said that one of the, one of the consequences of that is a bonker mentality, and everybody kind of gets that. So, that was a literal phrase that they used. And when we all have bonker mentalities, whether it's staff or us, and you don't take risks and you don't maybe progress the way you said. So, I really appreciated it, I think the quote was, "We all work best within our roles." So, I wanted to thank you again for coming and reiterating that.
You're welcome.
I went to the seminar on wastewater.
All the recordings of the sessions are on our website, if you can go back and listen to them if you'd like.
All right, well, if there are no more questions, on behalf of the whole council, I want to thank you so much for coming out and for doing this presentation and for answering all of our questions.
Very good, thank you very much, appreciate the invitation.
Okay, we're getting ready for our second presentation, which is by our counsel, Angela McGuire, regarding conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thanks again for a comprehensive overview of a bunch of the things that typically would be in the presentation I would do. This is the one piece that we didn't discuss that was requested as well, that we give you a very brief overview on, conflicts of interest. In Arizona, we have two types of conflicts of interest, in my view. One is a statutory conflict of interest that's prohibited by law, and it's fairly convoluted, a law we'll walk through here in a moment. The other is the appearance of impropriety. Ken talked a little bit about that in terms of the open meeting law. That also applies in terms of conflicts of interest. But there are times when there's not a statutory conflict, but that someone will feel like there's a method of a conflict that they'll want to withdraw from the discussion about that, to avoid the appearance. That has a unique issue in terms of the way that a vote is cast under the town code or the town adopt procedures. We can talk about that as well, if anybody has any questions. Pretty much, substantial interest is the key. If it is a substantial interest, you have a conflict under the law. Substantial interest is a bizarre thing in the way that it's defined in the statute under the statutes. Substantial means it's not remote. And then, it goes on to define what is remote, and it gives about 10 different examples in that. Broken down a little more simply, if you have a pecuniary or proprietary interest, you have a financial gain, something of value, that is typically a substantial interest. So, your first question is always, "Do I have something to gain, either directly or indirectly?" Remember, it also includes things like waived obligations. If you had an obligation to pay a membership due or something like that, that obligation being waived is also considered a financial or pecuniary gain. It's not remote, those are the 10 statutory exceptions we talked about, they're very fact-specific. So, I'm always reluctant to give just a blanket, these are the exceptions, because until I hear from a council member what the specific facts are, I can't tell you whether or not you fit into the boxes. I can tell you that most of the exceptions are very narrowly carved out because something happened that, like you said, "Well, we didn't mean that," and they kept adding exceptions. But for the most part, if it's a financial gain of any kind, it's usually covered. Who is covered is the second question you have to ask, once you know that you have a conflict. Well, this is a very broad range of folks. It's, of course, yourself and relatives. And these are relatives by the whole or half-blood, and that's the term that's used in the statutes. What it interestingly doesn't talk about are blended families. Families that have children from a different relationship. So, that your children living in your household may not actually be related to you by blood at all, they may be zero blood. They may not have the same kind of complex rules that apply to them strictly under the statute. However, we interpret it as if they are blood relatives, because I think that's the intent of the statute. So, it's siblings and their spouses, your parents and their spouses, your grandparents and their spouses, children and grandchildren and their spouses. That's the immediate universe of the people related to you. But there's also another group that you have to worry about as well. And that is, and I got the wrong title on this, my apologies, that, your spouse and certain in-laws from that spouse. And that's where you catch a few of these other things, parents, siblings, and children. But then again, it doesn't catch the blended family child of that spouse. So, in today's world, this statute's a little out of step with how some families look. And so, just consider anybody who you're responsible for, certainly definitions, and you pretty much have it covered. Required action is, once you know you have a conflict under the statute, you're required to do two things. You have to declare your conflict, and we have that as a written form that the clerk has, if you declare it. And then, you refrain from any participation. And that means talking to staff, talking to other council members, you know, writing letters, doing anything else. You have to refrain completely from your participation once you've declared a conflict. The main question is usually, "Do I have a conflict?" Pick up the phone, call me, and we'll find out right away whether or not you have one. The result of a conflict, unlike when Ken presented the open meeting law, those actions are void. These are void of vote. And this is very important to the community, because there may be a time when one council member has a conflict, but it's still important to the remainder of the council to move forward with something. So, in those cases, it's up to you all to determine whether or not it's void or you're moving forward. And in most cases, it's three years from the time it's entered the contract that we have that opportunity. So, it's a fairly long reach in the statute. The penalties, if you violate it, are fairly extreme. If it's knowing or intentional, it's a class six felony. This is one of the few areas in public official's laws, things that are applicable to you once you were elected, that have felony implications. And it's very serious, and we want to make sure we never give anybody that case. If it's reckless or negligent, it's class one misdemeanor, which you take away a few of the things that felonies have, and you can't vote, you can't have a firearm, a number of different things. But when you drop down to class one misdemeanor, the potential penalties, the jail time and the money are almost as bad as a class six felony. It's six months in jail, $2,500 per offense. So, these are the types of things that we never want to get into. So, felony, misdemeanor, never want to go there, forfeit office. I don't think you'd care about that after you've got the felony going on. Key is, if you have a question at all, call me, send me an email, ask me the question. Because if I give you a written opinion that says you are not in violation, that this is not a conflict of interest, that is your get out of jail free card. If you make the determination yourself and you're wrong, felony, misdemeanor. If I make the determination and I'm wrong, you're scot-free and then you just fire me. And that's it. That's all we have, that's all I have out of what Ken has. Taking our presentation down to that much.
I have a question. It's just something that I've always wanted to know. I used to be on a lot of boards, and when I became mayor, I got off those boards, being a board. But is that a conflict if you were on a board, another board, and you were an elected official? Or even like, let's say you were on an advisory board, like Public Art or some kind of advisory board. And then, and if you came up with art or with a museum, would that be a conflict?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, most of those kinds of conflicts are more appearance of impropriety than they are actual statutory conflicts. The ones that would reach out during the statutory conflict is if you held a paid position or if someone that you were related to held a paid position with those organizations. And we've had that come up a few times where we have, it's a small town, people are involved in a lot of different things. And most times, council members will just withdraw from that particular item. And it really boils down to just those under the statute. But there are a lot of times when people will give you kind of a, "Should you really be participating in it?" Look, if it's something for which the council doesn't have to take an official action, it's very easy and just say, "Look, I'm not going to participate." But sometimes, that's not possible. And sometimes, the number of votes may be very important. And under the town adopted policies, a non-statutory withdrawal, when you don't have a conflict of interest under the statute, if you don't vote, you're deemed to have voted with the majority. And if there is no majority, you're deemed to have voted yes. So, it's very interesting, depends on what the motion is, you could put yourself in a very odd spot. So, it's important to understand that, but know that if it's something where there's a gray area, there's typically no penalty to the elected member to say, "I think this is gray and I should withdraw from it."
Right, sounds like they've just made the right decision to get off all those boards. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Elke?
Andrew, just to take it just a little step further, being a member, remember, nonprofits in town as well, there's been items that have come on the consent agenda, for a couple of organizations, I can think of specifically, that there's no pecuniary gain, they're all nonprofits doing work for the community, veterans groups and other nonprofits. And typically, consent items, agenda items come forward for events, activities, those sorts of things. And in situations where I have been the author of the application, I've recused myself and not voted as the appearance of impropriety in those situations now. In other situations where I'm still a member perhaps of the club, I mean, where would that fall as far as a vote on, let's just limit to consent agenda items relative to activities and events, those sorts of things like the fair or other activities?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Elke, I think that, again, it gets back to, do you in voting have a pecuniary gain in the outcome of it? Most of those items are special rent liquor licenses or special rent applications that really don't have any gain to the individual members, other than you get to have the event. There's no money flowing back from the town to that organization. If, for instance, it was an organization that was receiving donations from the town or some sort of funding from the town, you'd have to look at to see exactly, you know, how that was working and how the members were, if anybody was making compensation from that, that direct gift from the town. But those are really few and far between and easily analyzed. But typical are things that are on the consent agenda for you applying for like an extension of premises or any of those things are perfectly fine.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Andrew. If there, if we knowingly have a conflict of interest and we fill out the form, and there's an agenda item and there's discussion on the agenda item, are we supposed to truly leave the chamber for the conversation, the vote?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Brown, it is entirely up to the council member to determine how you will not participate. Some members leave the dais because it's just, then there's no appearance of any kind of, well, you raised your eyebrow, or you coughed, or you crossed your arm. And I wish I could say those were just examples I made up, but those are actually things people complained of. So, those types of things generally lead council members to go somewhere else in the room or out of the room altogether. Either one's fine, or if you want to start with it as a dais, that's fine with me in terms of the law. I just know that folks have thought that there's still participation, you know, passing notes or, you know, taking people under the table or otherwise.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Dickie?
Thank you. Andrew, thank you, Mayor. When I was on the school board, somebody on the school board had a spouse on the town council. So, we weren't paid on school reports, but, you know, you are technically paid on town council. What about something like that, we were sharing resource officers and other stuff like that? Were they allowed, were we allowed to vote on items that would have to do with the other governmental entities?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Dickie, that is one of the ten tariffs, depending upon the circumstances. So, there is a very oddly drafted tariff out for relationships between elected members or appointed members of governing bodies of different municipal organizations or, you know, Title 48 districts. And we have, we have a few of these situations now. But that's one of the things that has a specific exception that we have to analyze based upon whatever the item was.
Anyone else? Yeah? Okay, Sandra? All right, call for the public, anything there?
We have one speaker, Peter Vargo.
Hi, Peter.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'll try and be brief. I just wanted to clarify something. I came up in the, one of the agenda items last town council meeting. And I made some comments relative to the proposed sign ordinance changes. And I was quoted in the paper. comments relative to the proposed sign ordinance changes. And I was quoted in the paper, as well as being characterized in the paper as chastising. And I went back and I looked at the video, and clearly, I think I came across as being rather upset and angry, and that was not my intention. I want to specifically call out my respect and, you know, how I think about the hardworking people we have with the town, the staff members of the town, you know, Julie, and Bev, and Paul, and Bob, and all of the others. These guys work really hard, and I have a lot of respect for them. I may disagree with them, but I will always respect them. And I want that to be really clear. I didn't mean any disrespect. I certainly didn't mean anything to come across as being personal in nature or anything like that. And I just wanted to make that very clear. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And we'll go on to the consent agenda. We have one item, approving the town council meeting minutes, November first, two thousand twelve. May I have a motion, please?
Come on.
And second, and speaker's card?
No, ma'am.
All right, then roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McGee?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Eath?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you. And then we skip number two, and we go to number three, consideration of ending the contract with area agency on aging for the provision of home-delivered meals effective at the end of the day on Monday, December thirty-first, two thousand twelve. Okay?
Mr. Kavanaugh, the county's services director has a report to give.
Okay.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. Joining me tonight is also Senior Services Supervisor Kelly Fondel. So if there are questions that you have that I'm not able to answer, I will simply defer to her. As council is likely aware, we have partnered now for a number of years with the area agency, who is contracted by the county to provide meals to people that meet their qualifications. And those guidelines are typically associated with the level of financing that folks can afford, their standard of living. We also then provide the other half, so to speak, of the home-delivered meals program, which is associated with people that have a basic need. And it's usually some kind of a physical need, or somebody is temporarily coming out of perhaps the hospital for injury, or some medical treatment that is on the program for a period of time. So between the two entities, we think we do a pretty good job of covering the community. A number of years ago, we had two routes, roughly about twelve people on each of those routes for a total of twenty-four. A number of years, the program has grown. We added a third route a couple of years ago, so we're up to thirty-six. We found ourselves in a dilemma this year as we moved into the late summer into the fall. Typically, each year, those numbers drop off, the enrollment list drops down considerably. Some of the snowbirds go back again, some others come off the list for medical reasons, and they're well again, and they no longer need the meals. That wasn't the case this year. And so we're looking at a situation where we are required with area agency to not waitlist any of their people. So if somebody comes to them and says they need a meal, we have to basically make room for them, which means sometimes some of our people have to come off of that list. So we actually sat down with them this year and earlier this summer and said, "Here's our dilemma. We are turning away some people in the community because we cannot waitlist your folks. We need to find a way that we can expand the program. Given our tough financial times, we're not in a position to add more staff time or more resources with volunteers to be able to add that now, what would be a fourth route." So we said, "Is there some way we can work this out?" We really came to the conclusion, both simultaneously, between area agency staff and ourselves, to say, "We really reached the point where we probably need to split." They are still obligated, and will be obligated, based on the action they take this evening, if we do in fact split with them. They are still obligated under their contracts with the county to provide services to folks in Fountain Hills who meet their financial guidelines. That will not change, okay? If anything, it will expand, because now they're in a position where they can hire their own people, they can bring their own people and provide those meals, and we're not able to do that to the extent that we were being asked to do that. We also will be reducing some of the criteria and some of the paperwork and some of the work that's involved when you work with area agency. They require a great deal of documentation and inputting of information into their system. It's problematic for us because most of their other sites are staffed by paid staff. Ours are, with the exception of one person, all done by volunteers. So as that workload increased and was pushed from area agency down to our staff, it became more and more cumbersome and more and more difficult for us to comply with. But the bottom line for us became, how are we going to be able to expand the program, take more people into the program without having to waitlist everybody, or future people? And this is the situation we found ourselves in. So by making this break, it will allow us to now roughly, half of the clients that we have, half of the thirty-six roughly, and it varies a little bit from month to month, day to day, half of those clients are area agency and supported by them. They pay the cost of that meal through area agency, so it doesn't cost the client anything. On our side, it's the self-paid clients, the people pay for the cost of the meal. We would then be in a position where, in essence, half of those thirty-six people would go off of our rolls and would stay under the area agency. The other half, the roughly half of the thirty-six, would still stand under our program that would allow us to add more people as the requests came. Right now, we currently cannot do that.
Okay.
We did take it to the commission because we recognized it was a big step. They, at their, I believe it was the October twenty-second meeting, voted unanimously in favor to support the request that we brought to them. I do want to emphasize one other thing that I think is very important. It will be an attempt on both our part, and more importantly, on area agency's part, to make sure that that transition is seamless as possible. The only difference that their clients will see is they don't deliver meals seven days a week like we do, because they are paid-driven drivers instead of volunteer staff. So that's a luxury we'll continue to maintain here. What they do, though, is on Fridays, they would deliver two additional meals, typically frozen meals, to take people through that weekend. So that's really the only major difference that we see that this would create to the clients themselves. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
How does that affect our relationship with Fountain Hill Village? Are they justifying our clients then, or are they...
Actually, under the current system that we're operating now, they provide all those meals.
Oh, they do.
And we spoke with them, told them what the situation was, and they're understanding that the reasons why we're making the change. And then over time, we think the number of meals will increase back up again.
So they get paid by the agency for those meals?
We actually pay the Fountain Hill Village, then we get reimbursed from area agency.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman McGee?
Thank you, Mayor. The other clients that the area agency has in other cities, they also give the frozen meals on the Friday instead of going on Saturdays and Sundays?
Yes, because they do not deliver meals typically on Saturday or Sunday.
Okay, so, Mayor, then they have experience and they see that that does work.
Yes. In addition to that, they also provide a service that if they have somebody who truly doesn't have a microwave, but doesn't have any other options, they will find other options for them. So it's typically on a client-by-client basis.
Okay. Councilman Elke?
Thanks, Mark. Excellent presentation. This is one of those unique situations where ending the program as it's set up, and ending the contract will actually help all the recipients and expand the program.
Correct, on both sides, both for area agency and for the town as well.
I just want to stress that because it wouldn't sound like, "Oh, you're cutting the program. All this is actually just a set of circumstances. This will help."
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Councilman Hanson?
Knowing how important home-delivered meals is to our senior service commission, and the fact that they totally support it, makes it a very comfortable decision to make.
May I ask, ma'am?
So our vice mayor is that?
Mark, currently, we have volunteers that are delivering to the area agency clients. So now, area agency will be using paid employees to deliver those meals, which in essence will displace our volunteers that previously were involved in the program. Is there any conversation or plans for integrating them into the program so they can still participate in the program as volunteers delivering meals to folks in need?
So if I understand the question, would some of the paid staff that area agency have be somehow recruited to become volunteers for our program?
No, no. Let me, let me, right now, we have volunteers that deliver to area agency clients.
Correct.
They will no longer be delivering meals to area agency clients because area agency has their staff that will be doing that. Is that accurate?
Correct. That's accurate.
So my question is, will we displacing volunteers that are very attached to the program? Do we have a way of integrating them into delivering meals for the other portion, the self-paid?
I don't believe that was one of the things we did discuss with area agency, because they are, like I said, only paid staff. I don't know what their recruitment process would be, if they would look to some of our volunteers to do it. I think the temperament, as I've seen on the part of the volunteers, is they do it not because they want to be compensated, but because they want to help them. So there is an opportunity, I think, but I don't know how likely that might be. I don't want to make this more complicated than it is. Either I'm not being clear, or you're not understanding what I'm saying.
We have a whole host of volunteers now that volunteer to deliver meals.
Mm-hmm.
They will no longer be delivering meals because their clients are being accommodated by other folks. My question is, will Kelly have an opportunity to utilize this surplus of volunteers to work on our core program? Is that a little clearer?
Yeah, I apologize. The routes are not separated out by whether it's area agency or it's town, okay? So I don't know what that mix on any given route might be, but say it's fifty-fifty. So out of those twelve people that are on that route, perhaps six of them are area agency, and the other six, so they'll still be delivering meals, they just won't be delivering as many meals.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Other than that, Kelly, have I missed anything?
That's correct. We will continue to utilize the same number of volunteers that we have for the realized three routes. We should be able to be delivering fewer meals at this time.
Thank you, that answers my question. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kelly. No, it's okay.
Okay, anyone else? Councilman Elke?
Mark, just for the benefit of those at home that may not have heard what Kelly had to say, would you be able to repeat that, or perhaps Kelly could come up and say that again? I just want to make sure everything is crystal clear on this. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, council, just to clarify, we will continue to use the same number of volunteers that we have. Our volunteers will deliver the three routes, so we'll have all three routes. We simply won't have as many people on the routes. And we will continue to recruit or publicize the program and add more clients as needed.
You did lose some volunteers, so your number was a little bit down, huh?
Yeah, we, with the fingerprinting process, we did lose some volunteers. All routes are covered, but I think our volunteers will be comfortable with this change. And again, we won't lose any volunteers that we have with this new change.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Elke?
In the vein of advertising for more volunteers, would you like to provide some information briefly about how someone may contact you to volunteer, a phone number, an email?
Certainly. If anybody is interested in becoming a home-delivered meals volunteer, they just need to contact the senior service office. Our direct number is four eight oh eight one six five two two six. And they can speak with myself, our home-delivered meals coordinator, Anita Blough.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman?
If I may, I'd like to make the motion.
Please do.
I move to end the contract with the area agency on aging for the provision of home-delivered meals effective at the end of the day, Monday, December thirty-first, two thousand twelve.
Second. Thank you. Uh, we need to speak to first.
No, ma'am.
All right, then. Any other discussion on this? No? Okay, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, consideration of resolution twenty twelve dash seventy-one, finding existence of the statutory criteria supporting the creation of a political sign-free zone in areas of the town that contain a predominance of commercial tourism, commercial resorts, and hotel uses. And Bob?
Thanks, Mayor. Arizona Revised Statute, section sixteen dash one zero one nine F, provides that the town can designate by resolution specific commercial tourism, resort, and hotel political sign-free zones. Council recently requested the staff look into the creation of political sign-free zones for Fountain Hills. In order to adopt such a sign zone, council must determine that placing political signs within the right-of-way will detract or deter from the town's scenic and aesthetic appeal to tourists. Up to two sign-free zones may be identified in town with a maximum combined total of three square miles. Staff has generated a map showing a recommended location of such a zone. This map identifies the archerial streets, some collective streets, streets within the downtown area, streets that access golf courses, Golden Eagle Park, the McDonald Mountain Reserve, Fountain Park, and the town center municipal complex as a political sign-free zone. The zone shown in red is two square miles in total area. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twelve dash thirty-one and the adoption of the political sign-free zone as presented. Thank you, I can answer questions.
Okay. Any questions for Bob?
May I ask, ma'am?
Vice Mayor McGee?
Bob, you've been clearing our discussion about this ordinance in the past, and I have had a few questions regarding this from some residents. And just to clarify, these sign-free zones are right-of-ways, that if someone lives in or adjacent to a sign-free zone, they still are allowed to post a political sign on their private property. So if you could just affirm that?
That's correct. Political signs on private property are not covered.
Thank you. Any other questions for Bob? Councilman McGee?
Thank you, ma'am. If you have it on your own yard, do you still have the fifteen-day limitation? You're supposed to take it down after the primary and then the general?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so even if it's at your own house?
Fifteen days or ten days?
Fifteen days, I know that part, even though whether it was actually within your own yard.
All right. Anyone else? All right, then. Uh, let's see. Can I get a motion on this?
May I move to find that the placing of political signs within certain areas of the Fountain Hills right-of-way will detract from the scenic and aesthetic appeal of the area and deter its appeal to tourists.
Second, please?
Second.
Second?
Please, second.
All right, I'll take, Councilman McGee, second?
There you go, absolutely.
Any speakers heard? No, ma'am. All right, then. Any other council discussions? Now a call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Seven Zero? Thank you.
May I have a second motion? I may. Move to approve resolution number twenty twelve dash thirty-one, which establishes a political sign-free zone within the town of Fountain Hills pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, section sixteen dash one oh one nine, as outlined in the staff report.
All right. Any discussion? Any speakers heard?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Seven Zero? Um, we have, Ken, do you have any summaries that you want to present?
No.
All right, then, we're up to adjournments. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Go move.
Had a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay, talk some more.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.